The following program is sponsored by the Greek Ely's Radio Shack Dealer 570 Altman in downtown Ely and brought to you as a public service by Georgetown Media in Ely, Nevada. White Pine County Commission Meeting, August 26th, 2020.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and start everybody's ready, is that very good?
Okay, so would you all please stand and join us in the pledge? Shane wants you ladies to...
Certainly, will you call me in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As is normal, we are going to start the meeting with the moment of silence for prayer and meditation. Okay, the first item on the agenda today is for public comment. Was there any public comment in the building this morning or any on the phone line? Brooke on the phone? Brooke, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, fellow commissioners. I just wanted to let you know that I appreciate you authorizing money to purchase the derelict shed to the north end of McGill. Unfortunately, we were unsuccessful, we were outbid for those four properties. The treasurer's office had a very, very successful tax deal auction, which we're cashing, I'll be telling you about in the future, but I just wanted to say thanks again for trying to go down that road to a base and clean up some stuff from McGill there, but we were not successful. Maybe next time.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else on the phone with public comment? Mike? Seeing none, anyone in the audience with public comment? George, it looks like you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, on your agenda item 1B1, you're gonna review applications for the public health official and reviewing, excuse me, reviewing those that have applied either have the expertise and need to continue advertising for someone with a medical background. Those that apply do not have the proper credentials. You don't go to a pharmacist to get your eyes checked, you don't go to a pharmacist, excuse me, to get your eyes checked, and you don't go to an optometrist for your medications. You guys are setting new highs and new lows. This is crazy. Mr. Chairman, on your agenda item 2C3B, you're to consider compensating Dr. Byham reviewing at $500 per hour for monitoring the new public health official. Again, you people are setting new highs and new lows. Hire someone who is qualified. If you don't, get rid of your HR director. You just redid his job description, remember that? He's required to bring forward the most qualified person for the job. Stop insulting the people you serve. Mr. Chairman, on your agenda item 1C1, you're to consider approving the ratified orders from the Office of the Board of Health for White Pine County. There was nothing in the packet for the interested citizens to review what orders you're talking about. Packet should be complete. Mr. Chairman, the Regional Planning Commission meeting held on July 15th, 2020 approved that the county would split one acre from the 3.8 parcel, contrary to your rules and regulations in the past. I told you that you have yet to put me on the agenda. You're the appeal. Quit discriminating. I have the same rights as anyone else. I want to be treated the same. When you intentionally hold people off from improving their properties and they have less than two and a half acres, and here you have someone who's splitting off a 3.8 acre parcel down to one, no, you can't discriminate. Mr. Chairman, I've brought to you more than one summary discrepancies or deficiencies that I have to bring before you, before you do something about the building inspector, who selectively enforces law under color of law. I've told you numerous times that the biggest single detriment to the growth of the city and the White Pine County is the building inspector. Depending on who you are, nothing gets done, or there is no problem. Again, the discrimination needs to stop. Mr. Chairman, the apartment lot for the New Convention Center is just about complete. The center walkway has not been put back in. It does not meet the minimum ADA requirements for the handicap. They're being forced into the street, which could be hazardous for those in their wheelchair especially. This is new construction and is mandated to meet minimum federal ADA regulation requirements. I told you of the need more than once. Recently, they just installed the last light on the corner of Seventh and Lyons, and it was installed on private property. Can't do that, folks. Where's your inspector? What are you paying for?
That's your, your three minutes are up.
Can I get some answers here?
Yeah.
I still haven't got an answer on the address, address off of Avenue D and going on Highway 93. You have a heck of a head.
I have, I have your statements and I'm working on that. I've told you before that I'm getting to it.
How much time do you need?
I do.
You know, from school, your assignment's overdue.
Thank you, George.
And you're gonna get it now.
Thank you, George. Thank you. Is there any other public comment, please?
Chairman, I've received a letter to be read into the record.
Okay.
You all have a copy of it as well, and there's copies in the back. I think you should replace or repair the tables under the pavilion in the county park downtown Ely. There are multiple instances of racist and anti-Semitic graffiti carved into them. Please see pictures attached. I didn't get pictures that were attached, I'm sorry. In the first image, the text reads, and I'm gonna spell this out instead of read it, I-H-8-N- asterisk-G-G asterisk-R-S in block letters, and I really don't think this is how Ely would want to be perceived by out-of-towners or what minority members of Ely would want to have read while eating snacks with their families on a Saturday afternoon. For those who are trying to guess, the message translates to, "I hate N-words." In the second image, you can see that someone has carved a swastika, which when combined with carved use of the N-word indicated to me that this person may have meant physical harm to Jewish people. I wonder what Jewish members of our community might think of this. Remedying these particularly disturbing instances of graffiti should be an easy fix for the Board of Commissioners of White Pine County. I would be particularly impressed if the county pursued erecting a sign or other notice in that spot that reminded citizens that racism and bigotry are not a tolerated part of the culture of our town in 2020. In the context of the racial reckoning and our town's history as a sundowntown, this would be an appropriate and timely gesture on the part of the board. Thank you for your time. Mary Sullivan, Ely resident.
Thank you. Before we move on, is there any other public comment in the building or on the phone? I see none. So seeing none, hearing none, we're gonna move on to page two, the first item, item one, notice under untimed items. It's a 9:00 AM timed item with a bid opening slash auction for lease of hangar two. Item one is discussion for possibly actually approve to select the highest sealed or oral bid to lease hangar number two at the Yellin Field and approval to enter into a lease agreement with the highest bidder consistent with the county's notice of intent to lease hangar number two at the year. Do we have...
Thank you, Chairman. There's the two sealed bids in time for the closing of the seating period. I'm going to each of you in a minute's time.
I have a question. It mentioned oral bids, what's, what's that about? If we're opening sealed bids?
You open the thing material that anyone can, they can bid, I guess.
Okay. That's what they want, to keep the purpose of the sealed bid?
I also, Chairman, received a notice of intent to oral bid if required by Mr. Mike Coster in our audience.
Go ahead.
Okay, this bid is, I bid 241 a month on a five-year-plus option year senior leasing and comply with mandatory lease terms specified by the announcement. Thank you, Mike Coster.
I have a bid from, this bid is submitted by Peter Shar, C-A-J-J-A-G-A-R-E-S, Sharjes, and Tom P-L-E-H-N, Phelan, the current hangar two leases. We would like to submit a bid of $240 per month on a one-year lease with four subsequent years available annually at our option at the original bid amount. Years after that will be made available to us right as a right at first refusal and then current rate. We realize the bid request states a five-year lease, but in aviation, there are too many variables to submit to that, so we request that if our bid amount is the successful bid, that you accept our one-year lease with the four subsequent years available at our option as stated above. Thank you for your consideration. Peter S.R.J., I hope I'm saying that right, and Tom Phelan, I hope I say that right. But Mr. District Attorney, is this a...
It's debatable, but it's outbid, so it's your...
Yeah, mine was 241 and accepted the terms as, as written, so.
Okay. Any questions by anybody on the board? We have a 241 bid, which is the highest bid, and a 240 bid.
Are those the ones you selected?
Yeah, I hope, yeah.
Is there anyone locally that wants a bid in this room or leave higher than that?
Anyone on the phone want to make a bid or anybody in the building? Mike, seeing none and hearing none, we'll move forward. I'll look for a motion to award the bid.
I move to award the bid to Mike Coster at 241 a month on the terms as described in the, in the bid packet.
A second?
Motion by Travis and a second by Lori. Any further discussion on this? All those in favor?
I'm opposed.
Opposed? None? Ash and Ash. Ian?
Okay.
You have an item here under collected official?
I do.
And I was wondering if maybe you'd like to address that prior to the public health voting, because I think they're trying to go hand in hand. That, that's up to you.
That's a really good idea. I'd consider that.
So we're gonna go to, we're gonna go to page three, item A1. It's under County Commission, and it's Ian Bullis, Ian Bullis, Commissioner. Item A is discussion of a recap of the impact of the COVID-19 locally with statewide, national, and international comparison. Ian?
I wanted to start, it's not written here, but it's because it came out in the news this morning, the Idaho Legislature just voted to suspend, remove, cease the state emergency, eliminating their governor's powers during that emergency. Emergency's over for COVID-19 in the state of Idaho. So I, I really just felt like it was a good time for us to just step back and look at what we've been dealing with and just take another comprehensive look at what we've been through, what's happening now, because that's how we make the decisions, right? We don't wanna go off of what we think we remember or what we heard on a newscast that's usually driven by agenda. I want us to take a look at what is a fact. And I wanna make it important, make sure we understand, when it comes to statistics and when it comes to reality of what's happening around us, we don't need to be medical professionals to sort this stuff out. Now, when it comes to deciding whether something is infectious, whether it's medical related, yeah, but when we're looking at what has happened, statistically what has happened, we don't have to be particularly qualified to do some basic math, so. I wanna take us through the timeline of what's happened with this outbreak. So on March 16th, we were told a few things. We were told that there was a, forgive me, I forget the name of him, there was a UK college, an individual there introduced and released a report where he estimated that 2.2 million people would die from this disease in the United States, and I think about a half million in the UK, which sent us all into panic mode immediately, because that's a legitimately terrible concept. So we shut down, we sheltered in place, we were told 15 days, 15 days to slow the spread. The goal was to allow medical facilities to be prepared for a large influx of patients coming in to deal with this. That was the goal. There were no mask mandates. We weren't even told to wear masks, if I remember correctly. It was, there were some recommendations out there that were controversial, and no one was really sure what to do at that point. So we shut down for 15 days. March 31st, we're 15 days into it. The curve is flattening, we're told, but we need 15 more days. So we, you know, uncontested, just gave up 15 more days of emergency directives. They still had not mandated masks at this point. We're 15 days into it, April 15th, 31 days into it. Now we're told we have to open in phases so that we don't cause more infections, which is where all of a sudden we took a slight shift in our goal. The goal was to slow the spread, now we're trying to stop infections. There still weren't any mask mandates at this point. June 24th, almost 70 days into what was supposed to be a 15 days to slow the spread. We had a spike in positive cases, which panicked a few people, but listen, guys, this doesn't have to be a political thing. If, if there's 100 of us in the room and 50 of us happen to have a disease, I don't care what it is, but none of us test that, then we don't know, the infection rate is zero. But if we test everyone in the room and we find out that there's 50 people that have the infection, we just have a spike of 50, 50 infections, did we not? So infection rate spike at the same time we started testing has to do with, we were testing more people, not necessarily a rapid spread. So what we did is we falsely attributed spread when it was really that we were just testing people that already had it. And then all of a sudden, the mask mandate was issued. August 26th, now we're 131 days into a 15-day-to-slow-the-spread process. The case count is up, but the death count is not. So where I started this out was we've been given false information and we've had changing goals. So false information, they were wrong about the death rate, completely, thank God. They were wrong about the infection rate. They were wrong about shutdown being the only way to slow the spread, and we'll get into South Dakota and Sweden as some examples. They were wrong about asymptomatic transmission. That's why we were all supposed to shelter in place, that's why they were mask mandating, because the premise is, I might have it, and I don't know it, and you don't know it, and me being near you could infect you. Well, now the data shows asymptomatic transmission is statistically negligible. The death counts are grossly inaccurate. We have numerous examples. We've got people that have been falsifying their death certificates. Because why? Well, because they get funding for deaths that are marked COVID-19. So we've got, you've all probably heard about it, the guy that died in a motorcycle accident was categorized as a COVID-19 death, and that was one example. I believe in, in Florida and in New York, they've had to rapidly and drastically reduce and adjust their death counts because they're being caught falsifying this stuff. So we're being told information and being scared because we hear these high death counts when we find out they're actually totally false. The infection counts are grossly inaccurate, meaning there are numerous examples of double counting a positive. If I go in for a test and they test me and I'm positive, and they tell me to go home and come back to be retested later, if I test positive again, they count it again. The CDC website states that having common, the common cold will produce a positive result. So people are being tested for this that might just have a cold or something else, and it's turning up as a positive result, so we can't trust most of this data to be accurate on the side of, like, we're taking action because we see high infection and high death, and what we now know is that none of that is actually true. They've changed the goal on us from slow the spread, which is reasonable, to we have to stop infection at all costs. Well, that's not, that's not possible. Next, I wanna get into the understanding of the governor's authority. This is a big one. I'm not sitting in here not wearing a mask just to be a jerk about it, I'm just trying to take a stand for what I believe is, even though it's a simple thing, it is a very serious thing. The oath that we swore was to uphold and to protect and defend the Constitution of the United States. Yes, we swore to uphold the state and local laws, but when state and local laws violate the Constitution, the Constitution controls. And furthermore, there actually has to be state and local laws that give authority for these things in order for them to be laws. We got signs all over town in businesses saying state law is you have to wear a mask. That is not the case. The legislature did not pass a law stating you have to wear masks. And I wanna get into this, the governor's authority. You guys can go read the entire NRS, I don't wanna bore us today. This is an excerpt. All the other language deals with defining the state of emergency and discusses logistics and options for acquisition of resources and finances. You guys can go in there and read that. This specific excerpt deals with the governor's authority, okay? Quote, "During the period of the state of emergency or declaration of disaster exists or continues, the governor may exercise the following additional powers," listen carefully, "to enforce all laws and regulations relating to emergency management and to assume direct operational control of any or all forces, including without limitation volunteers, auxiliary staff, or emergency management in the state." Did anyone hear that he has the right to create new laws or regulations? He has the right to enforce existing ones, he does not have the right to create new ones. So enforcing a mask mandate is completely outside of his authority. I do not see, so I'll just read what I've got written here, I see no language giving the Nevada governor power to mandate closure of businesses nor the required wearing masks. Therefore, any business fined for mask-related OSHA violations should appeal and fight those fines because they are illegal and baseless. And I'm dead serious about that. So again, just to rehash, the reason I do not comply with the mask mandate is because it's illegal. And it's, there's no point. We're gonna get into why I think there's no point. Let's get into the stats, the actual cases. The United States, we're sitting on 5.5 million cases. This was at the time, these things change all the time, but just according to the Johns Hopkins website, and, and then of course, the, some of these I got from the local state and, and local information.
Ian, can I interrupt a second?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Can you, can we kind of allow others to look at these stats and statistics?
Yeah. Well, this is public records, so everybody should be able to, to see what we're seeing.
I'm just trying to...
Yeah, if you wanna read, I wanna go through it line by line so you can all read it together. I didn't wanna just breeze over it, if that's...
That's your, that's your...
Yeah.
Go ahead.
So we've got the United States, 5.5 million cases and change, 1% of the population, 1.68% of the population's infected. Hospitalized, 351,000. That makes a 6% infection rate, meaning of the people that get infected on a national level, 6% of them were needed to be hospitalized. Everybody else is just getting sick like we've always gotten sick. And the actual deaths, 172,000 at the time that I was looking this up, when we were projected to be at 2.2 million, that's a very, very big difference. Nevada cases, we're doing, we're doing pretty good, we're at 62.7,000 cases, and then we've got, that's 2% of the population, the hospitalization rate, we're, we're actually doing better than the national average at 1% hospitalization rate. And again, I'm just comparing the last, the deaths, it's just comparing what they told us would happen versus what is really happening, okay? We're at 1,100 people in the entire state of Nevada have supposedly died from COVID-19, but remember, we don't even know if that's true because they've been lying about the death counts. In White Pine County, and I apologize, there's a typo there, I had written in there something else I had written down and didn't grab the actual number. I think we're at 25 or 30 actual cases in White Pine County? I hadn't looked at it recently. Last I looked, it was like 22 something, I remember right. But that's...
Does this include the seven for this past week?
No, it doesn't.
Year one?
No, it doesn't.
Because just in a week, we've had seven new cases.
Okay, so, yeah. Now, I'll come back to it, but the, the point I'm trying to make is new cases doesn't equal panic. It doesn't matter. It's negligible. We're at, so we're at, even at my number of 45, so that was, my point is the high number of 45 was wrong. It was less than that, but maybe with the seven new cases, we're closer to that number. We're still at less than 1% of our population. We've had two people hospitalized, two. And one has died, and again, they projected, according to the original numbers, we'd have had closer to 77 or 67. Now, this is what is not counting for White Pine County. So all, we're at 45-ish infections, two people hospitalized. Of our 10,000 people in the county, that's not counting the 10,000 motorists per day that drive through Ely. I checked with Endoff, they looked at their stats, the travel through town has not gone down through this, throughout this pandemic, so it's been the same. We've had 10,000 people a day going through our town, using our gas stations, touching our gas pumps, going into our stores, eating at our restaurants, and yet we're still sitting at 45-ish or less cases. We've had 97.5,000 overnight visitors since March. So the point of that is, I'm trying to get is sometimes people are concerned, well, we don't have high cases because we're isolated. We are not isolated. We might be hard to get to, but there's a ton of people coming through here, and they very easily could have been carrying this disease and infected us. And yet, we're still seeing negligible numbers. Let's talk about other states and other locations that haven't locked down. So scroll down a little more to the next page. We've got South Dakota cases. They're at 10,400, 1% of their population. Their hospitalization rate is 4%, and, and they're at 154 deaths. South Dakota did not lock down. South Dakota does not have a mask mandate. South Dakota lived as normal with some basic recommendations. So this whole premise that we must lock down, we must have compassion for each other, we must wear masks, we must socially distance, we must do all these things, they did none of it, and their statistics are on par with us.
You might wanna check, recheck this in a week or so, because there's eight states after Sturgis that have a marked increase, including...
Well, of course, they're gonna have a marked increase in cases, but the issue isn't that we're gonna have an increase in cases, the issue is that it isn't dangerous. It is statistically not a thing. We're looking at Sweden, Sweden. Sweden's numbers are the same. Look at Idaho. Again, Idaho just got rid of their state of emergency because they recognize this is pointless. Idaho's walking around with no masks on, there's a few people that have it, no mask mandates, and again, they have eliminated their state of emergency, they're going back to normal. They're... There, I wish I could have brought it for you. I got friends that are in Idaho, they're going to rodeos where there's tens of thousands of people in the crowd all the way around, you can see. And just some comparison, what I did, there's a little.